Good afternoon. My name is Ed Bernard and I serve as the Chair of the Financial Accounting Foundation. I'd like to welcome our stakeholders tuning in today. Today's meeting will include reports from the FASB Chair, the GASB Chair, the FAF Executive Director and the FAF Treasurer. We'll also receive a report about the latest activities of the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. And we'll hear from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get to the reports, I'm pleased to welcome Erin Hill to today's meeting. Erin joined the FAF as Executive Director last month. She's a financial and corporate governance expert with over three decades of executive leadership experience on Wall Street. Erin is a CPA and holds an MBA and law degrees from Columbia University. We're very fortunate to have Erin serving this new role. The role's not new, but Erin's new. And we'll hear from her later in the report in the FAF Executive Directors Report. So, welcome Erin. I also have the pleasure to announce a number of important appointments. The FAF Board of Trustees has appointed three new members to the trustees. Mark Baer, Gregory McGreevy and John Bull Akpara. Mark is the former CEO of Crowe LLP, a leading US public accounting and consulting firm, where he continues to serve as a partner. Crowe LLP is the largest member of the Crowe Global Network, which consists of more than 200 independent accounting and advisory firms in more than 130 countries worldwide. Prior to serving as CEO, Mark led Crowe's audit practice for a number of years. In his current role, he's focused on advancing the US firm's global strategy through several strategic initiatives and applying his professional experience serving the public interest focusing on the future of the profession. During his tenure as CEO, Mark also served on Crowe's Board of Directors, the Firmwide Management Committee and the Global Board of Directors. Greg McGreevy has spent over three decades in executive leadership, investment management and capital markets. He retired in 2023 from Invesco, one of the world's leading independent global asset management companies, having served as the Senior Managing Director overseeing a global investments business of $1.5 trillion and managing $1.4 billion in net operating revenue across 15 countries. He served on the firm's Executive Committee and co-led its Global Investment Council. Previously, Greg served as CEO of Invesco Global Fixed Income and held CEO and CIO leadership roles at Hartford Investment Management Company and ING. Throughout his career, Greg is focused on strategic leadership, governance, risk management, board and shareholder engagement, large-scale transformations, compliance and corporate oversight. He currently serves as an independent trustee of the Putnam Funds, providing fiduciary oversight and supporting robust regulatory compliance on behalf of shareholders. John Bull Akpara has over 30 years' experience in banking, diversified financial services and professional services. His expertise spans corporate governance, strategic and financial planning, leadership succession planning and regulatory management. As Bank of America's Chief Accounting Officer and Head of Global Financial Control, he's responsible for the Global Corporate Controller, Global Corporate Tax, Global Legal Entity Controller, Corporate Sustainability Controller and Regulatory Reporting Functions. Prior to his current role, Mr. Akpara was the Chief Accounting Officer and Controller at Citigroup. He's held senior leadership roles across various finance functions at Morgan Stanley, Capital One and American Express. John Bull is a member of the Financial Standards Accounting Advisory Council, and the Executive Leadership Council. In addition, he serves on the Board of the Nigerian Higher Education Foundation. In 2024, Mr. Akpara was named to Savoy's 2024 Most Influential Black Executives in America. He's also a recipient of the 2022 Council of Urban Professionals Finance Catalyst Award. The trustees also appointed a new member of the FASB, Dr. Catherine Shakespeare. She will succeed Christine Baudesan, who's here with us today. Catherine's term will begin July 1, 2026 and conclude on June 30, 2031, when she'll be eligible for consideration of an additional five-year term. Dr. Shakespeare is a professor of accounting and the Thomas C. Jones Associate Dean for undergraduate programs at the University of Michigan. She has over 30 years' experience in the academic and accounting field. She's also contributed to numerous research papers, been quoted in media publications such as The Wall Street Journal, Financial Times, Businessweek and The New York Times, and presented at both academic and association conferences. She holds a BA in Accounting and Finance from Dublin City University, is a Fellow of the Institute of Chartered Accountants of Ireland and holds a PhD from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. She is a Michael and Jean Sakinen Faculty Fellow. I have one more appointment to note. Lisa Washburn, who will join the GASB succeeding Jeff Pravidi. Lisa's term will also begin July 1, 2026 and will conclude June 30, 2031, when she'll be eligible for an additional five-year term. Ms. Washburn is a public finance professional with over three decades of experience in municipal credit analysis, risk management and regulatory engagement. She's well-versed in analyzing municipal debt structures, default and impairment trends and disclosure practices. She's also an industry leader in municipal credit research, methodology development and cross-sector consulting. She previously served on the GASSAC for six years and served on the Executive Committee from 2024. In addition, she served as a member of GASB's Voluntary Digital Financial Reporting Taxonomy Consultative Group during 2025. We're pleased to have Lisa working with us again in this new capacity as a member of the GASB. You can see the FAF Appointments Committee had a very busy year and I'd like to thank all of them for their hard work, especially the Committee Chair Lynette Kelly. I'd like to officially welcome all our new appointees and wish them well in their new roles. Later in this meeting, we'll take a moment to thank those who will be completing their service for our organization. With that, for now though, let's move to our regular agenda. First item of business is to approve the minutes of the Board's August 19 meeting. May I have a motion? Second?
Set.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We'll now move to reports from the FASB, GASB and GASSAC. We'll start with Rich Jones, Chair of FASB.
Great. Thanks, Ed. Good afternoon. Please find a copy of the Third Quarter Chair Report in your materials and I did want to spend a few minutes updating you on our activity. During the third quarter, the FASB issued final standards related to the accounting and disclosure of software costs, derivative scope refinements and the accounting for purchased financial assets. We also issued an exposure draft related to accounting for paid-in-kind dividends on preferred stock. In addition, up through today's meeting, the Board has completed redeliberations and voted to issue final ASUs later this year or early next year on our projects on accounting for environmental credits, accounting for government grants, codification improvements, which is made up of 34 individual standard-setting items, interim reporting, hedge accounting improvements and accounting for debt exchanges. When you look at our technical agenda today, you will notice that of the 10 projects on our technical agenda, six have been voted to proceed to final standards, one is in redeliberations and three are in initial deliberations. We are continuing to use our research agenda to gather additional input for our Board as it relates to future projects. This includes bringing feedback on the 2025 Agenda Outreach ITC back to the Board and we have already added two projects to our agenda as a result of that process. Throughout the end of this year and into next year, we will be bringing the remaining approximately 70 items that stakeholders identified for potential standard-setting back to our Board for agenda decisions. The EITF and the Private Company Council, as well as our normal receipt of a general request, will also continue to provide the Board items to consider to add to our technical agenda in the future. We look forward to the continued input from our stakeholders as we prioritize our future standard-setting efforts. We are also continuing to work on the post-implementation review related to the current expected credit losses standard and also expect to issue the final lease post-implementation review report in the next couple of weeks. The lease PIR process proved extremely valuable to us here at the FASB by not only providing us with input as to how that standard was functioning, but also to identify ways to improve the future standard-setting process. In addition, during the third quarter, we also issued the Fifth Annual Investor Outreach Report, which highlights over 2,100 investor interactions over the last five years. If you haven't had a chance to look at that report, I can direct you to our website. I think you'll find it very informative. And then finally, on behalf of my colleagues on the Board, I want to thank you for your continued support as we work to fulfill our mission. I do particularly want to thank our departing trustees. So Sarah, Tim, Robin, Lynette, Rick and last but not least, Ed. Your oversight, your advice and your support for our organization and our mission is critical to our success. So I want to thank you very much. We look forward to welcoming the new trustees, welcoming Dahlia to the trustee board and welcoming Kathy sometime next year to our Board at the FASB. So with that, that's my prepared remarks, Ed, and happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Rich? Rick?
I have one and I can't resist. But Rich, in your report, and thank you for that, you mentioned the input you get through the EITF and the PCC. Can you tell us how important it is to get the input from those two groups as far as FASB's agenda setting?
Sure. Sure. And the PCC has a specific purpose, right? Making sure that it's understanding the needs of private company stakeholders. So those specific targeted outreach efforts of the PCC and the talented people on that Board help bring those issues to us with a particular focus. And I think that's something that I, as a Board Member, have found very valuable. You know, the EITF serves a slightly different purpose. It's made of a very talented group of people who are deep into the accounting literature and transactions that are going on. The way I see that is very often they see issues before we would. They see them, they can talk about them in public meetings and they can make a recommendation to our Board whether there's a project we should take on and if so, what a proposed solution might be. From there on, it's up to our Board to make those decisions and to go through our full due process with both of those organizations. But they serve different purposes, but I think they've been very valuable for helping us identify issues and potential solutions where we need to act.
Any other questions for Rich? Manju?
Rich, you mentioned that the 2025 Agenda Consultation Project, the comment period just got over and FASB team is now going through what you heard. Do you mind sharing with us what feedback you received? And do you have any thoughts about, you know, what were the themes that you heard?
Sure. And Manju, a great question. So just maybe to recap our process. We did an initial outreach last year with over 200 stakeholders, asked a simple, open-ended question, what should be the FASB's priorities? We populated our invitation to comment with that issued in January of this year for public comment, had a six-month comment period and we got back over 130 comment letters in response to that ITC. Our staff has already gone through those comment letters, our Board members have gone through those comment letters and effectively there's over 70 individual items of suggested standard-setting. What is interesting just from a trends perspective is a lot of those 70-some issues are fairly narrow. There are targeted improvements to codification where there's already gap on point. That being said, there's some other areas that are quite a bit broader. When you think about hedge accounting, you know, do we need a new model there? And some input that we've gotten there, that certainly would be a broader-type project. So I'd say it encompasses just about everything you can think about and our codification today is the input that we got. But we're eagerly working through that feedback and I think you'll see that pay dividends for us for several years as we work through that agenda.
Thank you.
Anything else for Rich? Great. So GASB Chair Joel Black?
Thanks, Ed. Good to see everybody. Thanks for taking some time to hear what we have going on at the GASB. Highlights for our third quarter, I'll start with one of our major projects, the severe financial stress and probable dissolution, also known as Going Concern Project, ended its comment period of our preliminary views document at the June 30th, very beginning of the third quarter. We received 38 comment letters. And from that, we moved into having 25 different participants participate in a series of three public forums. Those public forums were new for us. Traditionally, we have done public hearings and user forums that separated preparers and auditors from users and having dialogue about their comments with the Board. We decided to put all those groups together in the same room in these public forums where we had some preparers, some auditors and some users, all with the Board and staff in a roundtable-type format to be able to dialogue about each of their comments with each other and with the Board. Our second major project is our project on infrastructure assets. During the quarter, we made some significant decisions about disclosures. Remembering back to the preliminary views, I would say there were three really significant new disclosures being contemplated. Two of those, the Board has tentatively approved to move forward towards the next round of due process and one of which, the disclosure related to maintenance, actual maintenance expenses, was for cost-benefit reasons not moved forward by vote of a majority of the Board. Our voluntary digital financial reporting project, or the taxonomy project, continues to move forward. We have formed a taxonomy consultative group, which is made up of 19 people representing both preparers, auditors, users and technologists related to financial reporting. That group met for the first time during the third quarter and I think is being very constructive in adding to the feedback about progress on that project to our team working on it. We did have welcomed our newest Board Member, Robert Scott, whose term started July 1. Robert, having served on the GASSAC for 10 years, including six years as a Chair, was very familiar with our process already. Between that and onboarding discussions with the project teams, Robert certainly hit the ground running and we're excited to have him on Board. And without naming all the trustees, as Rich already did, I want to, on behalf of the GASB, thank all the trustees whose terms are leaving. We'll miss you and really appreciate all the impact you've made on us and oversight and support you've provided to us. We look forward to working with the new trustees, including our new Chair, and are very excited about Lisa Washburn's appointment to the GASB Board and look forward to working with her. With that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks. Any questions? Manju?
Joel, you recently briefed the Board on the new way you're conducting public forums and the one that was conducted for severe financial stress probable dissolution project. These public forums, as I said, are new for you. Can you talk to us about the impact of this change? And has this new format improved feedback that you receive?
Sure. Thanks, Manju. I would say they were a resounding success. Everybody that, I say the team and the Board all feels like the feedback and dialogue we got from participating in those public forums is better than the feedback we'd been getting in the previous way we were doing those. And the participants seemed to particularly enjoy participating in the public forums. In fact, there were a couple of people that Alan was trying to get to participate in the first one and they were reluctant to, so they just observed it. But they enjoyed it and wanted to participate so much that they asked to come to one of the next public forums. So I think everybody has really valued that change we made and they've been very successful.
Any other questions for Joel? Great. Then I think our next report is from GASSAC Chair Rob Hamilton. And Rob, I think you're on virtual?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you for the chance to present today and I'm sorry that I'm not there in person. I wanted to mention that our materials are provided, or excuse me, my letters are provided in your materials in advance and I just wanted to go over a couple of the highlights. I also want to acknowledge the outgoing trustee members and as Rich and Joel had said, thank you for their support and looking forward to working with the new incoming trustee members. For our GASSAC meeting that was held on October 20th and 21st in Queens, New York, we had really strong participation with 27 council members arriving and providing their feedback. We did have four departing members, as commonly happens in our final meeting of the calendar year and just appreciated their contributions over the five and six-year terms that they had been part of our council and looking forward to welcoming new members in 2026. I also want to mention that we are supported by our GASSAC Coordinator, Lisa Parker, who's on the GASB staff. She is terrific and does a great job and really appreciative of all that she does for our council meetings. For the projects that we covered, Joel mentioned two, those infrastructure assets and severe financial stress and probable dissolution. We had a number of others, including subsequent events and revenue and expense recognition. Really a robust conversation provided, just as we always do, getting a chance to share our perspectives with the Board and the staff. One of the other things that we do in each of our meetings is we provide feedback on emerging issues that each of the council members feel are bubbling up within their various spheres of influence. And the things that we covered would be digital assets, environmental credits and deficits, the PFAS settlement accounting, I won't attempt to try and pronounce what that word actually is, but timeliness of reporting and credit ratings and also accessibility standards for smaller governments, new professionals and those charged with governance. We also had the pleasure of meeting the new FAF Executive Director, Erin Hill. She joined our meeting and we were able to get to know her and it was a real pleasure and excited to work with her in the coming years and months. As the other topics that we have commonly, Joel provided his update as the Chair, emphasizing the implementation guidance update, what's going to be coming in 2026, continued progress on the five active standard-setting projects, a focus on educational outreach, including videos for elected officials, and also noted that as part of our annual prioritization exercise, where we at the GASSAC identify our top six priorities, that four are on the technical agenda. So just appreciative of how much the contributions and the feedback that the GASSAC provides. We know that the GASB listens and it's just very appreciative of just the opportunities and seeing how the GASB responds and incorporates our feedback. The Director of Research and Technical Activities, Alan Skelton, he provided an update on trends and technical inquiries, especially GASB Statement Number 101, which is compensated absences. That's a standard that's in effect for many governments for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025. Also talked about monitoring of digital assets and risk disclosures and the importance of materiality in applying standards. For our next meeting, we will be meeting on March 23rd and 24th in Norwalk, Connecticut. And again, that's part of our annual prioritization exercise, which is a pretty big part of the things that we do in giving some feedback to the Board on areas that we feel are of particular importance. That completes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Rob. Any questions for Rob? All right. Ed, Beth?
It's more of a comment than a question, but I've been impressed with the coordination between GASSAC and GASB. And at the October meetings, it was very clear that the material that you went through fed well into the GASB agenda and I kind of kept track. It was eight minutes into the GASB meeting when they brought up the input that you folks provided. So I just want to compliment both organizations for that well-working process and I want to thank you both for all that effort.
Thank you, Beth.
All right. Thanks. Anything else for Rob? Sorry. Oh, Manju?
The Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee met in Norwalk yesterday on Monday, November 17. We received informational reports from FASB Chair Rich Jones and GASB Chair Joel Black. And as we do at each meeting, we discussed meetings that trustees observed in the past quarter. Trustees Rick Rysig and Marion G., as well as FASB Liaison to PCC Sue Cosper, shared their observations of the PCC meeting that took place on September 25th and 26th. In addition, we heard from trustee Rick Rysig on his observations of the GASB meeting on August 11th and from trustee Lynette Kelly on her observations of the Public Markets Advisory Committee on November 13. The committee and its participants held productive discussions with FASB and GASB leadership on several pertinent topics. For any stakeholders interested in viewing a recording of yesterday's public session, you can find this on the FAF website. Now, for the FASB update, with regards to the report received from FASB, Chair Rich Jones and FASB Technical Director Jackson Day discussed the FASB's progress in the last quarter. Again, many of these matters have already been covered in FASB's report during this session. The primary topics reviewed by the committee included due process summaries for PCC credit losses, accounting for disclosures of software costs, derivative scope refinements and initial measurements of paid-in-kind dividends on equity classified preferred stock. We also discussed FASB's final report on its post-implementation review of the Leasur Standard, Topic 842, which began in 2016 and it included three stages. Post-issuance date implementation monitoring, post-effective date evaluation of costs and benefits and finally, a summary of the research and reporting. As a reminder to our audience, the structure of the PIR process was developed in 2020 and approved by the FAF Board of Trustees. Lastly, I want to note that the committee held its annual meeting with FASAC Chair Mike Morrow, who reviewed the council's most recent activities and the transition plan for his successor, Dave Sullivan, who was also present at our meeting. I want to take this opportunity to thank Mike for his years of dedicated service and contributions to the FASAC. Thank you, Mike, and also welcome Dave Sullivan in his new role as FASAC Chair. Now, moving on to the GASB update. We received reports from GASB Chair Joel Black and GASB Technical Director Alan Skelton, who reviewed the main highlights of the past quarter. Many of these matters have already been covered, again, by the GASB Chair Black's report during this session, so I won't go over them again. But the primary topics that our committee covered included the public hearings related to the preliminary views for severe financial stress and probable dissolution project, the significant decisions on disclosures of GASB's infrastructure asset project and the first-ever meeting of the taxonomy consultative group for FDTA and an educational session from the GASB on the implementation of Concept Statement Number 7 related to note disclosures and how they have integrated getting user input on potential disclosures into their process. This was a very informative session and we thank GASB Chair Joel Black and GASB Director Alan Skelton for continuing to bring transparency and constructive dialogue to our meetings. And with that, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Manju. Any quick questions for Manju? If not, we'll go to FAF Executive Director Erin Hill.
Thank you very much, Ed. Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to start my report by taking a moment to thank the FAF Board of Trustees for appointing me to the position of the Executive Director. I am grateful for you giving me this opportunity to lead this wonderful organization and I couldn't be happier with the warm welcome you have all extended to me in my first six weeks. Thank you. I also want to take a moment to thank John for all of his gracious support and wise counsel since I started on October 1. I think everyone around the table would agree that John's leadership and contributions to the FAF over the years have been invaluable. So we all thank you, John, for your service. I know Ed will have more remarks at the end, but I just wanted to personally thank you for being so gracious to me and helping me with this transition. I'm very, very grateful. I'll start my update with a discussion of our 2026 budget. The Board of Trustees has approved the budget and we will soon be submitting it to the SEC for its review, namely to verify that the FASB accounting support fees are consistent with the requirements of Section 109 of the Sarbanes-Oxley Act. We will stay in contact with the SEC's staff to facilitate any answers to any questions they might have in order for the Commission to ultimately issue an order relating to the FASB's accounting support fees. Consistent with our usual process, management will then start working with both the PCAOB and FINRA to begin the assessment and billings for our 2026 FASB and GASB accounting support fees respectively. We will update you on this matter at the trustees' meeting in February. Now, as you heard by our Chair, the Appointments Committee of our Board of Trustees, supported by the FAF staff and by our outside search firm, has been busy. The committee managed to oversee the critical work of appointing trustees and members of our standard-setting boards and their advisory councils. As you've learned, on January 1, 2026, we will welcome three new FAF trustees. My warmest congratulations to Mark Baer, Greg McGreevy and John Bull Akpara. We look forward to welcoming them to this exceptional organization at the start of the new year. On a related note, I'd like to just personally say my deep gratitude to you, Ed, and to the departing trustees. You have been a source of counsel and advice and guidance for which, over these last six weeks, I've been incredibly grateful. Thank you for your dedicated service to the organization and your valuable contributions over these past five years. We also welcome and congratulate our new appointees and reappointees, who were mentioned by Ed earlier. And I'd also like to commend the Appointments Committee, along with the FAF Vice President of Human Resources, Betsy, her team and everyone else involved in this year's appointments process. That is no small task and you do it so graciously and professionally. Thank you. The scope of work for this year was a significant The scope of work for this year was a significant one to complete, and yet 2026 is already getting started. We know that we have some very significant appointments to take, to take care of next year, and I look forward to learning from all of you as to how to best support the Appointments Committee in executing on its mission. And with that, I'm delighted to turn it back to you, Ed.
Any questions for Erin? Great. Thanks, Erin. And with that, a financial report from our Treasurer, Manju Ganeri Wall.
Thank you, Ed. I'm pleased to report that our financial results for the first nine months, ending in September 30, 2025, reflect an exceptionally strong position overall compared to the 2025 budget. Net assets have grown over $13 million, largely due to the full year recognition of FASB and GASB accounting support fees and the overall significant $5.3 million favorable variance against budget year-to-date. These positive results corresponded to an increase in the reserve fund investments, which are also significantly higher than policy-targeted levels. We expect to continue these positive results against budget through the year-end. This provides us with the ability to use these additional investment reserves to fund, reserve funds to reduce the FASB and GASB accounting support fees that will be built for 2026. The overall variance compared to the budget is due to reserve fund investment income exceeding the budget by $2.7 million attributed to positive market conditions and operating expenses coming in $2 million below budget. The lower expenses are mainly due to reduced salaries and benefits from FASB and GASB vacancies, as well as savings in travel, depreciation, and other costs. And with that, I turn it over to you, Ed.
Any questions for Manju? Okay, so before we conclude, and I want to acknowledge a few other retirements, I guess I want to acknowledge my own. As this is my last meeting as FAF Chair, and I just want to take a moment to say what an honor and a privilege it's been to serve with all of you. And like all of you, I believe very deeply in the mission of this organization, and I've had the opportunity to experience firsthand the, both the wisdom and the hard work of the trustees, the boards, and the staff that bring to pursue and in pursuit of that mission. And I'm really grateful to have had a chance to be a part of it. So thank you all for making that experience so rewarding. As Erin pointed out, today, we also marked the retirement of John Auchincloss as Executive Director of the FAF. John joined the FAF in 2016 as Vice President, General Counsel, and Assistant Secretary, before being named Acting President in May of 2019. And then in February of 2020, he was officially appointed as the Executive Director and served in this role until October of this year, when Erin arrived. And you've just heard how they've been transitioning, which I think is a great mark of organizations to have that kind of orderly transition, and it's working out exceedingly well. John leaves our organization even stronger than he found it. Just a few items to note, since becoming Executive Director, John participated in the searches for every current member of the Board of Trustees and many other leadership roles. He navigated the organization through a global pandemic and remote work, led the site selection, construction, and relocation of the Norwalk office, helped craft revised memorandum of understanding with the SEC and key government stakeholder groups about our appointments process, led the effort to rewrite the strategic plan, or to write a new strategic plan, and oversaw the recent trustee review of the PCC. He managed all of this change while also tending to the needs of the hard-working FAF staff with vision, compassion, humor, and humility. He was the right person at the right time, and we're all better off for his leadership. John, we will miss you, and we're deeply grateful for all you've done. And I think here, with the help of Stephanie, we have a proclamation I'd like to present to you.
Thank you.
So we also bid farewell today to Mike Morrow. Have I still? Yeah, I'm on. Mike's been an outstanding leader of the FASAC in every respect. He has a remarkable ability to work with people of widely diverse backgrounds and experience, and is an excellent listener. These qualities have helped him shape meaningful conversations at FASAC meetings that have provided valuable input to the FASB in support of the standard-setting mission. Mike, we're going to miss your leadership and your friendship. We've had the pleasure of presenting you with a token of our appreciation at the trustee dinner last night, but I ask that we all recognize Mike today for his outstanding contributions with a well-reserved, deserved round of applause. So as others have done, I'd also like to recognize departing trustees Tim Kristen, Lynette Kelly, Rick Rysig, Sarah Smith, and Robin Washington. Wow, that's a big transition. We'll take a few moments to present each of them with a proclamation of appreciation. All five trustees began their terms in January of 2021. Each of them has made unique and important contributions to the diverse wealth of knowledge, insight, and experience of this board. And their terms conclude officially on December 31 of this year. On behalf of the FAF Board of Trustees, I'd like to express our appreciation for the time and experience you've brought to bear to our work. And we had a chance last night to honor and roast a little bit each of the retiring trustees. So today, I'm just going to ask them to join me in front. Tim's already here for, to receive a proclamation.
And Rick?
Oh, that's right. Sarah had to catch plane. And Robin is, was calling in from the West Coast. So thank you all. I really have appreciated the work with all of you. And before we end, I guess, apparently, I have to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ed. Time to walk towards the light, buddy. It's, it's a great honor for me to just, on behalf of the entire board, to take a moment to recognize you for your outstanding service, not only as the leader of the FAF trustees, but also to all the stakeholders that we serve. It goes, you know how, based on last night especially, you know how we feel about you. Everyone at the board looks up to you, partially because you're like nine feet tall. But you've been a great leader, and we appreciate you and what you've done for the profession. Just a few highlights from your three years. We've accomplished a lot under your leadership, including launching enhanced fee, enhanced free access to the FASB Codification and Governmental Accounting Research System, live streaming of FAF Oversight Committee meetings, kind of must-see TV, the debut of new FASB, GASB, and FAF websites. As you mentioned with John, a very big thing that was done was a 2024 PCC review, and the appointment and reappointment of what I'm quite sure is a record number of FASB, GASB, FASAC, GASAC, and PCC members and FAF trustees. So there's many more, but that is an impressive track record. We applaud your leadership style. You have always ensured that the board looked at the most important issues and that all board members felt heard in the discussions and were able to actively and positively participate, which is not an easy task. So, most importantly, in closing, we value your friendship, the commitment that you demonstrated since day one to the mission, and, as I said, importantly, to stakeholders for our organization. So on behalf of the trustees, I am pleased to present you, and this is in lieu of a severance award, this proclamation.
Thank you. We'll talk later about the severance. So this is the end of the public session for today's FAF Board Meeting of Trustees, Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you again to all who have tuned in. Let me remind you, everyone, that the next FAF Board of Trustees meeting will be held here in Norwalk on Tuesday, February 24, 2026. Thank you and have a great day.